Hello, this meeting is in order. I see that we have some scouts in the audience. Would you young gentlemen like to lead us in the pledge this evening? Is that a yes? Come on up. Come on up right here if you would.
To the nations unified, the United States of America, and to the republic for which she stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is Troop 185 leading us in the pledge this evening, correct? Thank you. Anne, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Keenan, Ms. Tennessee Zerker, Mr. Gerber, Mr. Reiner, Vice Mayor Saleh, Mrs. Boring, Mayor Lecliter.
Here. Thank you. As we all know, Veterans Day is next Monday, and we are having an observance here in the city of Dublin next Monday at 11 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken. And in recognition of Veterans Day, we have a proclamation read this evening. And receiving this proclamation on behalf of local veterans will be Jeff Noble. He's the commander of the Wesley G. David's American Legion Post 800. And the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas Veterans Day provides an opportunity to publicly commemorate the contributions of living veterans, through a congressional resolution, Armistice Day officially received its name in the United States in 1926 and was declared a national holiday 12 years later by congressional action. And whereas, recognizing that peace was equally preserved by the veterans of World War II and the Korean War, Congress made the day an occasion to honor all those who have served our country. And in 1954, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed a bill proclaiming November 11th as Veterans Day. And whereas there are more than 23 million veterans throughout the United States, including generations of citizens who have risked their lives while serving in World Wars I and II, Korea, Vietnam, the Persian Gulf, and the global war on terror, our veterans have fought for the security of our country and the peace of our world, defending our founding ideals, protecting the innocent, and liberating the oppressed from tyranny and terror while enduring the hardships, fears, and tragic losses of war. And whereas, Americans live in freedom because of the courage, dedication to duty, and love of country by our veterans, on Veterans Day, we honor these brave men and women who have served in our armed forces and defended our nation. And whereas, in recognition of the contributions of our service men and women to the cause of peace and freedom throughout the world, November 11th has been set aside as a holiday to honor all veterans. And whereas, the city of Dublin will observe Veterans Day with local veterans and their families at a breakfast at La Chata Lane in historic Dublin and a ceremony at the Grounds of Remembrance in Dublin Veterans Park on Monday, November 12th. Now therefore, I Timothy Lecliter, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of November 5th through the 12th as Veterans Week in the City of Dublin, urging all citizens to recognize the sacrifices made by veterans and preserving our freedoms, and encouraging all citizens to display the U.S. flag and to participate in patriotic activities throughout the week.
Thank you. On behalf of all the veterans of Dublin, I do want to invite all members of council and city staff to join us on Monday at the Grounds of Remembrance. We have a fairly unique program. We have a couple that moved to Dublin in 2007, and 10 days later, Mom went to Kuwait and Dad was home with the four kids. Come and hear the story. It's pretty good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. It looks like we're going to move right along the consent agenda. Would ask if any council member wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda for Therefore, I would move that we approve the actions for the five items listed on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne, if you call for the vote.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to our second readings. Ordinance 64-12.
Amending chapters 51 and 52 establishing capacity charges for the sanitary sewer and water systems.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, members of council. We are asking for your approval this evening for ordinance 64-12, which, as Anne stated, would amend ordinance or amend chapters 51 and 52 of the codified ordinances for the water and sewer capacity charges and tap fees. We outline these charge, changes to the charges both in our CIP discussions for the years 2013 through 2017, as well as in our Finance Committee meeting that was held on October 8th. Just as a reminder, the majority of our tap sizes have not been increased in a number of years. The three-quarter inch tap size was increased by $100 in 2009. Fees for the one-inch tap size to the six-inch tap size were not increased since 1992. And then finally, the eight-inch to 16-inch tap sizes were established in 1995 and have not been revised since. So we are asking for your approval this evening as recommended by the Finance Committee at the conclusion of our meeting on the 8th.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none. Anne, if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 65-12.
Amending chapter 35 of the codified ordinances to revise the fee and service charge revenue cost comparison system and establishing a schedule of fees and service charges for city Dublin services.
Thank you.
Similar to the prior ordinance, we brought this forward during our October 8th Finance Committee meeting, and this is just the annual review of our cost of services comparison and which then subsequently establishes the fee schedule for the upcoming year.
Any questions, comments?
Is this, we were going to take a look or review, I guess maybe, of the budget hearings with respect to looking at this on a biennial basis?
Yeah, I don't know that we will have anything ready for you during the budget hearings, but certainly before we invest time next year in starting the process, we will bring forward an administrative recommendation to council as to how we, the timing of how we should move forward with this cost study.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Anne, if you call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 66-12.
Amending chapter 153 of the Dublin Code of Ordinances to modify sections 153.078 through 153.083 and relocating hedge definition to section 153.002.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Following the last council meeting and taking into consideration all the comments that various council members made, we did some research and came to the conclusion that in order to kind of split the baby or figure out a way to have live vegetation as fence, fence material would not be an enforceable ordinance, would be one we would have very difficult time enforcing, if at all, and probably would be declared void for vagueness under a standard by the court. So based upon that, and I have talked with both Mr. Gerber and Ms. Boring, who raised that issue, and we walked through that entire thing, based upon that, it would be the legal recommendation that if council is still of the mind to remove the live vegetation issue from the fence code, that you would do so, and that there is a reference to it someplace else. There's two different references, I think Amy pointed out, that there's a reference to, oh, live vegetation needs to be taken out. At the same time, I believe Mr. Reiner made a motion at the last hearing, or at least indicated that there are some new materials for fences that he would recommend be included in the modification as proposed by staff per your direction in July. And if that's still the case, I would, it would be the recommendation of the legal department that you go ahead and remove the live vegetation as presented to you and make the change if it's your indication that Mr. Reiner suggested. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I'm not sure I heard you right, but also in that, when it says other natural material that you're going to put in there excluding vegetation.
Excluding, yes, excluding live vegetation, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anne, if you call for the vote.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
No.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the first reading of ordinances, ordinance 68-12.
Amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2012.
Introduction, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. This is a routine piece of legislation that we bring forward each year about this time of year. As you know, we have a number of TIF funds set up that serve as funding sources for many of our capital improvements. We get these payments from the counties semi-annually and pay for those improvements in those TIF areas throughout the year with these TIF dollars. This ordinance, for the most part, just appropriates those dollars that we've received from those payments in lieu of taxes to the appropriate expenditure accounts to pay for the projects that have been previously approved, either as part of the CIP or as subsequent legislation that has been brought forward to council. In addition, in this ordinance, we have also included an appropriation for our bond proceeds. There was one instance in the sewer fund where we actually had to unappropriate money. We included with the original 2012 appropriations, an amount that we expected to issue, but due to some changes, we are going to unappropriate some of those dollars so that we don't close out the year being over-appropriated in these, in this particular fund. So other than that, it's a pretty straightforward amendment to the original 2012 appropriation.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Going once, going twice? Okay. Did someone like to move that we dispense with public hearing? Is there a second?
Okay.
Anne, if you call for the vote on the emergency.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quickly moving on to the other portion of our agenda, with respect to a tree waiver. Mr. Keenan, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I've got a motion, Mayor. Make a motion. I move to set aside this, aside this, the council denial of the master maintenance tree replacement fee waiver request from the October 22nd, 2012 council meeting, and to set the fee waiver request for a de novo hearing on, at the 11/19/2012 council meeting. The reason for this motion is that the city did not give notice to the applicant or their representative of the 10/22/12 hearing. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any comment or discussion? Mr. Smith, do you have any comment you'd like to make?
No, and opposing counsel, not opposing counsel, for master maintenance is in agreement with that motion. He's here in the audience today. Mr. Klein, thank you.
Any other comment?
I would just point out that the lack of notice was inadvertent.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I would like to point out that we did publish it in the paper as required, and it was noticed in the paper. Which is what we need to do in all cases.
Yeah, that's what, that is what we're legally required to do. It has been our practice to either by letter or phone call to notify the individual or the company making the request for a waiver.
But I appreciate your point, Kathy. Anyone else? Okay. Anne, if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
No.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
No.
Mr. Re, Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So just remind us all how we're going to proceed from here.
What will happen is at the November 19th hearing, we will have staff present a report. You obviously will be chairing the meeting. Mr. Klein will be here to make a presentation on behalf of master maintenance at that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Excuse me. Yes, Mr. Langworthy.
I'm substituting for Justin.
Okay.
Justin's at the Kramer Street Neighbor Association meeting tonight. We didn't quite anticipate you being this quick on your agenda, so.
Okay. All right.
So I'm going to do a poor job, I'm sure.
I know we've been working Justin hard, but I didn't think he aged that much. No offense. Anyway.
Well, Anne, one of the reasons I feel badly standing up here is Justin's put so much work into this and been so creative in his solutions to some issues we've had along the way. Also had a lot of cooperation, a lot of help from Brandon Brown at our GIS department, and Bruce Edwards, who wrote Community Relations, so they also played an integral part of this. As you recall, some months ago, I believe, we sent you a memo indicating we were going to be looking at doing the community plan and switching community plan to an all-website based format. And I'm here just to show you, just to introduce this just very briefly, and we're not going to spend a whole lot of time on it, mostly because I want you all to be able to play with it as well. So if you can go home, get on your computer, kind of do what I'm doing, I think you're going to find it very intuitive, very easy to use, and also very informative. But if you start with our handsome picture there, of course, start with our basic page, you'll see up in the corner, there's a little notation there for the community plan. And if you click on the community plan, it'll take you to our community plan website. And this is where we begin to inform people about what we're doing with the community plan and the contents of it. You see across the top, if you want to go to any particular chapter of the plan now, you can jump to that particular chapter. Then we have different areas. I'm going to go over one or two of these. Special area plans, future land use map, thoroughfare plan, some of the recent updates we've been working on, and then, of course, the full 2007 plan as well. So let me just kind of run you through how this works. This first page, as I said, shows kind of recent updates, and this is kind of our amendment process and what we've been doing all along here for the past few months, and even some of our more recent events that we have, have had. And see, this is tonight's event here. And at the bottom, and you'll find on most of these pages, there's a contact information where you can type in your name and address if you wish, and send along a message to us to make a comment on any particular page that you wish. You find these comment pages of virtually all the pages of the plan. So if we click on special area plans, you'll see the special area plan map. This shows all the different special area plans and their locations throughout the city with their current name. And if I just pick one of those, we'll go the AV Road. You'll see, and let me zoom in a bit here, you'll see some little arrows here or little targets, and these are click-ons. So if you click on one, it will tell you what is going on in that particular place. Here it talks about preserving existing trees with neighborhood buffers, future office development. We saw this some months ago, it was part of a rezoning. And, close it out. And this is the AV Road, this is the area plan that goes along with this, and you'll see just some different bullets or issues here you can kind of zoom in on and click to as well, and it will also tell you then various facts about those particular little items. So this is completely interactive. You can do this with any of the individual webpages now, and area plans. And as part of our amending process, what we're showing is the new text in blue, and it will have some strikeouts in red, so you can see what the former community plan, and Kathy, we thought of you when we did this. You see what the community plan said before, and then the parts will be struck through and the parts we've added to as you go through. So this is completely, again, looks completely interactive. Told you I'd mess that up. Then we can go to the future land use map, and the same kind of thing happens with the future land use map, there's different particular arrows you can, or targets you can go in on, that talks about different activities or different actions that have taken place since the last community plan took place. Click on each one of those, and you can follow more information, zoom to those as you wish. And on this one as well, we're also showing the different land use classifications, and we're changing some of the names of the land use classifications. So again, there's the strike through and the blue that you can read through, and then other issues that you want to read more about, you can just click through and read whichever parts you'd like to read of that or collapse others. So it's very interactive. We think it's very intuitive. It's not hard to use. We think people can navigate their way through it fairly quickly. Think it becomes much more useful, much more accessible over time as we go through this process. So, again, I wasn't going to take a whole lot of your time, but I'd be happy answering questions that you might have.
Thank you.
We think this is very innovative. I don't know of anyone, I personally don't know of anyone that's gone to this extent in terms of doing this kind of process online.
Yeah, it looks really interesting. I was just wondering, is there also somewhere where the plan is just a clean plan rather than the blue and red cross-offs?
There will be. We don't, right now, there will be, when, obviously, when we get to that point, we'll have a clean plan.
Yeah, because probably if somebody was interested in copying pages, or that they'd rather have a.
Sure, a click of a button, you could flip it back and forth between redlined and the clean copy as well. What, I presume you've got some kind of protocol in place in terms of keeping this updated? Because that could be.
Well, that's something we have, in fact, I have to talk to Steve about this at some point, because one of the, one of the issues we have with adopting the community plan by ordinance is every time you change it, then you have to change it through ordinance. What we'd like to do is find a way that we could do some minor changes, I won't call them clerical changes, but there may be name changes or something that's fairly minor that we could do without going through an ordinance. But we, I'll have to talk to our wall director about that.
But in terms of the land use and those kind of things, as development takes place, that, those buttons that you hit that were supposed to be something in the future, and now they are really something.
Yeah, and we keep changing those, we're adding those as we go. That's correct.
Yeah, good. Looks really good.
That makes a living document, which is, I think, everything we've wanted it to be.
Steve, I think this is a fantastic idea. I do recall back, excuse me, the last time we updated the community plan, there were a lot of residents that were somewhat, did not understand what a community plan necessarily was, and they were saying, well, gee, what are you doing to my property? Do we have some language or something in here to explain clear what a community plan is and what its purpose is?
Yeah, part, part of our, the introductory part of this is going to be kind of a how-to-use this plan, and once we get enough of it in place that we, that we can put that together, we'll have a how-to-use this plan, so it'll kind of walk you through both the use of the webpage, as well as what sections may be applicable and how to use those. We'll probably, I'm, I'm thinking we'll probably have some examples of things you can click on, just, just seeing examples of how these things work, too.
Somebody might see, they may have, I'll use a far out example, they may have a farmland right now, and they'll, they'll see a mall shopping center on their property, thinking that the city is going to come in and take their property and build a shopping center, which may not necessarily be the case.
Well, my realtor told me that is always going to be a park, yeah.
Right, yeah, that kind of thing, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, this is not my word, this is Justin Goodwin's basically in charge of this whole thing, so he's done just a fantastic job with this.
Staff, comments?
Just one quick comment. At the last Monday night's meeting, the joint meeting between council and P&amp;Z, there was discussion about providing an update to council on some of our next steps, and I received an email from Terry late this afternoon that the consultant team has been confirmed, and the team that we're looking at is Keith Meyer of MKSK Studios, which will do the urban design, Greg Comfort of EMH&amp;T, which will do the river, the roadway, the river, floodplain, and other engineering and utility issues. Brian Jones will be working on the architectural design framework, as well as graphics or rendering when we get to that point. And then Paul Andrus out of Andrus Studios, which is out in California. Those are the, the four different consultants that we're going to be using and will be working with, and to get some timeframes on availability for council and P&amp;Z for any next discussions, and we'll let council know as far as what your next steps are, whether we want to have some updates here at council or some special meetings set up. But we are moving forward with the plan that was discussed last Monday evening. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on then to committee reports. Mr. Gerber.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think all of you have been aware that John, Mike, and I have met three times over the past few months regarding Killed in Action, Action Recognition Memorial with the help of Fred and Sarah, and thank you so much, they've done a fantastic job of researching, coming up with various ideas and comparables as to what other communities are doing. And I think you've all had a chance to read this report. We are making the, we're making two recommendations. One is the establishment of a memorial and columbarium at the Dublin Cemetery, and also we have put together a, a official listing of, of a policy of how and who we would recognize those that were killed in action in service of their country. So I guess we can take questions. I don't know, Fred or Sarah, if you want to add anything to this. I do know one thing here, we did mention that with respect to the memorial, we are looking at various costs in a design, but I think we are still studying those items, and what we're really asking for at this point is the recommendation to accept the, our recommendation with respect to the concept of a memorial and columbarium at the cemetery, and that staff will bring forth at a later date the actual cost and the actual design. And I think the second part with respect to the criteria that is part of your, it's been attached here as part of the report, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. And Fred, Sarah, I don't know if you want to add more, or John or Mike?
Pretty self-explanatory.
Okay. The rest of council have any questions or comments? Rick, would you, or someone on your committee like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make, excuse me, I'll sort throughout the seating. I move that we adopt the recommendations of the KIA task force as contained in the, at the memo that you all have received.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Anne, would you call for the vote, please?
I'm sorry.
Sure.
Are we doing one by one, or are you doing both of them with one motion?
I'm just going to do both with one motion. That's okay.
Just to make sure that's clear to everybody.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Anne, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Thank you. And, and thanks also to staff, and Rick, and Mike, and John.
The staff did a great job. There was an awful lot of research on this and background, and it was very, very thoughtfully done and made our job a lot easier. So thank, thank you to Sarah and others. Fred.
I thank the three of you for taking the time to, to do this for us.
Yeah, I think the final recommendation will be a very nice tribute. Thanks again. Moving on, Marcia, are you going to speak to the next item?
Yeah, the next item relates to something similar, in response to a request from city council to provide some additional information on dedication policies as it could relate to park facilities or amenities and features in the park. And the memo provides an attachment of what, what recommended policy is that, based upon research and review by staff members, and that Michelle Crandall, Fred Hahn, and Sarah Ott also worked on this and are available for any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments? Kathy?
Oh, I.
I'm sorry, maybe you were just preparing to vote.
No, I'm very uncomfortable with this policy that has been drafted. No, I'm very uncomfortable with this policy that has been drafted. It puts council in a very uncomfortable position of almost rating whether an individual qualifies or not. It feels like I need a resume on here. I was hoping that we might establish something that was very simple to do, like a legacy tree program and maybe have an area in each park that you could go to. And that way, it would be up to anyone who wanted to honor another person. But when I look at this, I'm going, it's very, puts me in a very uncomfortable position to decide who would qualify for this. And I'm wondering, you know, can, once Pandora's box is open, can more than one person be, have a dedication to the same place? But that question isn't really relevant because of the uncomfortableness I am feeling about the selection and naming of this.
We do currently have the city's legacy tree program in place for those types of situations, but this was really in response to council's request to bring somewhat more of an expanded approach to this and the ability to have park amenities dedicated in memory of or in honor of. So this policy is written both for those that may have passed that you would like to honor, but also maybe in celebration of, of someone that is currently living.
So let me ask a question. I may have more than one. So in other words, is it theoretically possible that someone could propose the naming of a park amenity for an individual who passed 10 years ago, 20 years ago?
Sure, I think that's, that's possible.
Okay.
If they had some significant relevance to the city or, or a historical figure or something of that nature.
Okay. And then as I read the policy, and the reason I'm asking the question is for clarification, of course, are there, is there, you know, a set of criteria for a proposal to name? I mean, here, I look at, on page two, and it appears as though there are sort of two levels of criteria. If you meet, am I, am I, am I correct? And then it looks like if you, if you go on to page, well, it would be section five on page three. This, "In the event the criteria in this policy are not met, Dublin City Council may in sole judgment select to dedicate a park facility, amenity, or feature." And that seems like an alternative. Is that right? Am I reading that correctly?
Right, we, we put in two fairly broad categories. And we looked at several different policies from other communities to sort of put this together. But we wanted to leave the opportunity for council, if something came forward that didn't really necessarily meet the guidelines of this, council would still have the opportunity to provide that dedication.
Okay. Can you give me an example? Just, just give me an example. Don't name any individuals, of course. But give me an example of the, of the first level or consideration. I mean, the, the one that would result in the greatest recognition, if I'm saying that correctly.
For the exceptional individual category?
Yes, yes.
I think it could be someone that has been a longtime supporter of the park system, perhaps, you know, donated land over the years or something of that nature, possibly. Someone, a community leader, an exceptional community leader that's passed away. We really want to leave these a little bit broad. And then the, the second one doesn't.
Before you go forward, Michelle, then, so then, what, you, give me an example then or examples of potential naming possibilities in, in the category, in this exceptional individual category.
Well, first of all, we left it as a dedication and not a naming. So you wouldn't be actually naming a facility or an amenity or a feature. It would be in dedication to or in honor of, that type of thing. So it could be anything from a gazebo to a soccer field, to a water feature, a bench, a fountain. So it could be something smaller in nature, a play, you know, piece of playground equipment up to something larger.
So you're talking about a recognition plaque of some kind at those facilities and not necessarily renaming a park or a structure or whatever?
Correct.
Just a plaque that says, this, this was dedicated on such and such a day.
In recognition of, right, correct.
And then the city would pay for that?
We have this policy set up that the requister would pay the cost, similar to our, our legacy tree program, but that the city could be the requister also.
Okay. And, and then, and then you were about to go on to the second level, I guess, or second form of recognition or the alternative?
Sure, historic events, places and persons. We do have in here military personnel killed in action, you know, a historical figure within the city. We also wanted this one, you know, we talked about the possibility of, what if we had someone that was from Dublin that won Olympic gold medal and we wanted to honor them in some way in the community? So again, a fairly broad category to allow for many possibilities.
And, and how does this process commence? Do they, would, would somebody proposing such a recognition, would they approach staff first? Would they approach petition city council or?
No, the thought is that they bring it forward to, to staff for us to look at, see how they wanted to, set up a dedication. There's also some review criteria, so we would go through that at the staff level first and then bring forward to council that proposal with staff's recommendation.
Other questions, comments?
So each one of these dedications, it's your recommendation that if somebody wants to name a bench or dedicate a bench in a park, that would come through city council?
That's how this is currently set up, yes.
Seems like we'd be pretty busy with these.
Well, we, we've also hopefully set up the policy that it's not frequent, and we do have a tree legacy program in place that many people do take advantage of.
Right.
That this would be a little more of a process someone would have to go through. We also did talk about the idea of, we have the tree legacy program, but also having a bench program with that as well. So some of the smaller amenities would be more of an internal staff process.
Okay.
Merrily.
Just to follow up a minute on what you just said, you know, I think that would be really helpful, because I don't think that, I think that like a bike rack, I mean, you can sort of now begin to think about dedicating things that might have been related to the individual. And I, I think to me, that is an appropriate staff process. And, you know, whatever larger is defined as, I don't know, you know, would come potentially to council. So I will be open personally to looking at some definition, like you were saying you were considering.
And we, we could remove this amenities from here, which really includes a smaller features, and then make that more of a staff process, and then just keep the facilities and the larger features as a council decision.
I mean, that, that's just one person, I'd say that's okay with me. Having listened to the Penn State thing over the last year, I'm wondering on B, will the name engender a strong and positive image, whether we also then have something that would remove some dedicated thing if something very negative did transpire? You know, I'm sure that Penn State or any other university would never have thought of such a thing, but now that it is, we see where that can become problematic for an entity would be as, also true of the city. So.
We've got some buildings at Ohio State, similarly, kind of.
Right.
Situations with no, no recourse. You know, for me, I'd really like to just spend some time giving this some more thought. I'm not ready to act on this tonight. I agree with Kathy to the extent that it puts council in kind of a box, potentially, that I don't feel real comfortable with. I'd just like to spend some time with this, digest it, and maybe ask some more questions. Marcia, did you want to comment?
Well, and that's, that's fine. One of the things we wanted to bring some information to council to react to it. And also, I think we can look at some things about as far as dedications or namings related to, I know one of the things we had talked about is that it, it wouldn't be for a living person, you know, would have to be after the fact, so that things like the Penn State issue, which I guess could happen after the fact, or become aware of after somebody is, has passed away. But also looking at the issue of the benches, we can look at things that are more substantial as far as structures, like playgrounds, gazebos, and things like that, or something that is more substantial in cost other than benches and things like that. So we can, we can look at some of those options as well.
Well, certainly, you know, Merrily, I think you make a very good point in Mike's request to have some time to, you know, reflect on this and so forth. What is council's pleasure? I mean, do we want to table this indefinitely?
Well, we have a request in front of us now, so we can, I don't think it's appropriate to table indefinitely. So we, I thought that was why we asked for this policy and the policy that the committee was working on. Is that, does the request we have in front of us fall under the policy that we've already approved? For the, so I think we need to have it on our next agenda. You weren't suggesting indefinitely, were you?
Well, I guess, okay. I, I just want to be clear with respect to what council's expectation is, or whether it, it, it's simply, well, I don't want to say simply, but, you know, a matter of, you know, having an opportunity to, you know, consider it and, and reflect and so forth, or whether, you know, you wanted something more from staff between now and the next meeting.
Well, and based on the discussion that we had, that we've heard this evening, we can look at any additional information or options. And then if any council member, if you have any thoughts or comments that you think of later, please give us a call and we can, we can look at including that in our evaluation for the next update.
Is that fair? Sure. Okay. Do we need to make a motion to table this, or just?
No, I don't think so. It's not.
Okay.
Tell them at the next meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Everybody good? Okay. I don't think we have anything else, Marcia?
No, that's it.
On our agenda? Let's go to roundtable, John.
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Merrily?
I guess I had a couple items. I just want to remind everyone that we have finance committee meeting on Wednesday, starting our operating budget review. It starts at 6:30 here in this room. Does anybody know now they're not going to be coming? I attended an OML, an Ohio Municipal League Board meeting last week. Most of the discussion was around, and I will give this to Marcia so she can review it and as well as give it to Fay, centered around the introduction of House Bill 601. This is a, as you know, this is a municipal income tax uniformity bill. Even though Representative Grossman and others had indicated that there was not going to be an introduction this fall, there, there was an introduction, and it did not include any of the compromises that the committee had been working on. So the OML board confirmed the staff's recommendation of not supporting as, as currently written. So I know that perhaps Marcia, Fay could attend maybe our committee meeting on Wednesday or, or our next board, I mean, our next council meeting to just bring us up to date on the committee. Fay is considered really the guru in Ohio on this topic, and I know in every meeting that I'm in that this happens to come up. She's the one that's always really brought forth as the leading intelligence on the subject. And so I would recommend that we be versed by her on what the main issues are and how this bill is currently introduced to not address them. I had a question regarding the historic Dublin parking study. What did I do with him, huh? My confusion was, here it is. Why were we investing money in, at the end, on the page three of 11? We talk about that it would cost us overtime expenses, et cetera, for enforcement of the existing three hour parking and all. And what confused me about it is that why would we continue to spend city dollars in this way when the owners of these businesses, it is their staff, based on the report, that are largely using up the public space for longer periods of time than three hours? So why are we responsible for using our tax dollars to do this when they're not enforcing? It said earlier that, you know, they, well, they talk to their employees, but they're reluctant to take stronger steps with their own employees. Yet they're the ones that would benefit financially from following the rules that they requested of us. You know, if you recall, they requested that we put in signs for two hours, and then they came back and said, well, that wasn't enough, because people, you know, eat longer than two hours or whatever. And so we, we increased it to three hours, and now we find by this report that many of the violators are their own employees. I mean, and we, you know, we lit the parking lot up by Indian Run. We had a bike, a walking path, and we did a lot of already expenditure of money to improve the area for their employees to use that. So I'm, I, I for one, I'm against us continuing to spend money when they're not willing to enforce it themselves. I, I know it's a catch 22, but I guess I just need some explanation for this.
And I'd like to add on that those reserved places for employees and the library, I never see them hardly used at all. And I'm wondering, why are we taking library spaces if they're not going to use them?
I park there.
I have as well.
Yeah, and we, I mean, part of what we continue, and Jeff Tyler specifically continues to work and have a lot of conversations with the business owners to encourage and try to get them to require their employees to park up at the Indian Run lot. The one thing that we're also looking at doing is changing the number of the time-limited spaces so that there are fewer unlimited spaces in the Darby lot that will, after somebody gets a ticket or two, that can change behavior. And our thought is that, you know, then you don't have to do as much enforcement on a regular basis, you can do periodic enforcement. I don't know if Steve has anything?
That's essentially what we were doing. We were doing periods of continuous enforcement, then we would do random enforcement. So we, and we didn't do it on a regular basis, so you didn't quite know when the continuous versus random enforcement was going to be in, in the lots. We were even issuing some tickets in the areas that were already marked for the, the three hour spaces for some employees. And all of us that have been down there observing have observed employees parked their cars in the Darby lot and walked to a particular place of business. And we discussed that with all of the restaurant owners, and I, I agree with you, I mean, preaching to the choir there. We, we were really trying to encourage them, and a lot of them think, well, if one of the restaurant owners doesn't do it, why should I do it? And so they, it was a lot of, a lot of discontent about that individual policy. So we thought probably, as, as the city manager said, best approach might be just to try to attempt to change behavior.
So Steve, this was always an enforcement issue, really, I think. And so what are we really going to do? Are we going to speed up the enforcement now?
Well, what I put in the, the request was, was first of all, mark all the spaces in the Darby as, as time limited, but to also extend that time later into the evening, when we get more into the peak hour. What we found, a lot of, if you have a three hour limit, for example, and that some of the employees come at four o'clock or three o'clock, they can run past our five o'clock time limit. So extending it out to seven o'clock would allow us to catch more of those employees in those spaces when they come later in the afternoon. in those spaces when they come later in the afternoon. So that was the intent of running it out a little bit longer into the evening. Of course, that runs past, obviously, our normal workday, so that causes some other arrangements we have to make in terms of doing some enforcement. And we are looking some alternative aspects or means of enforcement as well with the Dublin Police Department, too. Not them doing it, but for them helping us train some people to do it.
I'm in agreement with what you're saying, you know. I know it's, there's no resolution to it, I realize that, but-
I hate to be so blunt about it, but I don't-
It's very discouraging to me, frankly. You know, it's very discouraging to continue to help the private sector when they're not helping themselves, frankly. And then I just wanted to mention that, consistent with the email that you received from Marcia, with the tree dedication policy, that on November 20th, I believe around four o'clock, that the Christmas tree dedication to Dr. Ken Carpenter will take place, and everyone's welcome to participate in that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes, I noticed John's not here tonight. Is there a baby?
Oh.
Congratulations.
There is, yes.
Okay. You're Joe, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Otherwise, he wouldn't be here.
Yeah, I was thinking, so congratulate, send our congratulations to him.
I will do that.
I always, I also wanted to mention, and I don't think we mentioned this at the last meeting, OU had a dedication, was it a dedication? And it was so exciting to be there. I didn't know who was happier about it, the City of Dublin, or OU, and what was amazing was I stayed around afterwards, and people came up to me, since we were introduced while we were there, and thanked us, and kept saying thank you to me, and hugging me, and I'm going, "Wow, this is really, really wonderful." So the partnership that our staff created, I would like to say thank you for that, because it's very obvious that it's going to be a wonderful association, with their enthusiasm almost exceeding our enthusiasm on that. So thank you. There was one other thing I'd like to mention. If you've gone by the Dublin Arts Council, it's starting to look really, really good. And we had said we would pay for landscaping, but there's two individuals that are contributing their labor so we can buy more landscaping, and I think they also worked on the landscaping plan, and that's Dave Amrose with the plan, and he and his brother have been putting extensive labor into that so we can buy more materials, and it looks wonderful. They have a personal interest in that, is that that home is historic. Mrs. Jelby, who lived there, was a great contributor to the arts, and I believe, I'm not sure the actual relationship, is Aunt, their aunt? So I'd like us to, council, to recognize their efforts, and perhaps, not perhaps, to send them a thank you letter on that, because it's looking wonderful, and the labor would have probably cut into that cost tremendously.
And his brother's Tony, since he has a lot of money.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Anthony, we like to refer to him. Mr. Anthony Amrose and Dave Amrose.
Anything else, Kathy?
No, thank you.
John, would you like to add any comment?
No, I just went out, and I did see how much effort Dave and his brother put in, and it was a monumental bunch of work, really. I mean, they went all the way around the building, landscaping this thing after I don't know how many days. Did a beautiful, beautiful job. So, and it was all out of just kindness and gut charity, so I was really pleased to see what they had done. And we should be, too. It turned a really rather unattractive-looking exterior into something really pretty nice. So kudos to Dave and his brother.
Great, thank you. Mike?
I just echo Kathy's comments on the OU dedication, and it was interesting to me that there was a huge number of different healthcare professionals from around the entire central Ohio area, competing hospitals as well as the ones that were affiliated with the OU piece. So they were all kind of pulling together for the end result, which is to put more primary care physicians in place, which is what we're going to need as we all continue to age. So it's really an excellent project up there, we're all looking forward to it. I had one quick question for Paul on engineering, I don't know if he's here tonight, and maybe you can answer this, but we had, I've had two calls from folks that, that's okay, we can get it later. I had two calls from folks, Paul, there you are. On Dublin Road southbound in the evening, talking about the traffic light, I think it had something to do with the bridge, it was closed, but they said that the light sequence going across to Riverside Drive, east on Emerald Parkway, that the traffic was backing up clear beyond Coventry Woods, beyond Brand Road.
Yeah, and it was a result of the Glick Road closure up in Shawnee Hills.
So it wasn't about the sequencing, because he was saying only five cars were able to get through, and I said, "Well, I haven't seen that myself," but-
No, it was just, it was diversion of traffic.
All right, very good. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Rick?
Very quickly, Paul, don't go away. A lot of people have been asking, with respect to Dublin Road, do you expect that to open on time, November 16?
Yeah, we just had that discussion today, and the culvert work is essentially complete. They're doing some stonework. The guardrail is in place, and then the path over the culvert needs to be finished. What we're trying to stage is the work on the bike path down there, and the ditch enclosure is progressing. The rain last week really held up the operation, so we're kind of going to see, we're watching right now. The 16th is our target date, but if a couple more days of closure will help the path installation, we'd like to proceed with that. So we're just going to kind of watch how things go this week. There's supposed to be good weather this week, so we're hoping to get a lot of work done this week.
And that's understandable with the weather, but a lot of people have been calling and asking.
Yeah, and we're sensitive to that, too, so thank you.
Yep. The only other thing, the OU event was fantastic. I'll tell you, the president of OU is quite a speaker. His enthusiasm was very catchy, and anyway, I'm glad they're here, and like Mike said, it was very interesting to see all the other allied physician and medical groups that were also in attendance, so I think it's going to be well-received, and it's going to do well for Dublin.
Thank you. Thank you. Amy?
Paul, while you're here, I'm curious about the Shire Rings Cos Gray Roundabout.
So are we. It actually got striped today. The truck apron, the pavers and the truck apron installation started today. That's progressing, so we're hopefully within a week or so of opening.
Terrific.
So I went through a lot of delays out there as a result of utility relocation, and then, once again, Sandy and its effects, or her effects slowed up progress last week. But it's actually gone very, very well. So we're nearing the end.
Excellent. Okay. The only other thing that I have, the administrative committee agenda has been empty for a few months, and we need to correct that. We have a couple of annual reviews that we are responsible for. Now that we have our plans in place, we need to begin those processes so that we are timely this year, and that is a goal, is to do them on time. So we'll be needing to meet Mike and Rick, and figure out how we want to proceed, and then present a plan to the rest of council.
Send an email out to explain a couple of dates.
Okay. Okay. Okay? That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, great. Justin Goodwin, would you come up to the podium, please? You didn't get proper recognition earlier, because you were somewhere else, so I just wanted you to get on camera. And we appreciate the presentation that you prepared for us, and Steve represented you well, so.
Well, thank you. Good job, Steve.
Any, but seriously, any comments you want to make?
Just, our staff's very excited about how the new digital community plan is coming together, and we're getting good feedback from everybody that we show it to, and we think it's going to be a great step forward in making the plan more accessible to the community.
Great, thank you. We look forward to it. Thanks.
Thanks.
Just one more reminder regarding the Veterans Day recognition next Monday at 11 o'clock at the grounds for remembrance. Finally, vote, if you haven't already, to the students in the audience, enjoy your day off tomorrow. If you're old enough to vote, please vote, again, if you haven't already. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.